Five thirty, I'd like to call the study session to order. First on the agenda is public comment period. If there's anyone here who has any comments, please step to the podium. Okay, next on the agenda is the roundtable discussion amongst council members. Any items that council member has to, council members have to discuss? Rajah.
So I was just, I wasn't in any of the discussions around the, we had talked about the possibility of doing a first, first layer down and putting stripes down and being able to open the streets early. And then I, I knew, I heard there was some changes to that and pushed that back. And so I just wanted to hear it firsthand.
Yeah, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to everything. The sidewalks were delayed a few weeks longer than we anticipated based on the subcontractor. And then it's the same process with the base layer, I'll call it, of asphalt on Brady Street and East Hubbard Street, waiting on a subcontractor to come in and get that work done. Everybody's super busy and has multiple other projects going on too. So we're kind of just, just waiting. But Joel and I did get some good news this morning that we should anticipate that work, that first base coat on Brady Street very soon. So we're looking forward to that.
But we're not going to open the streets once that's done, is that correct? Like we had originally talked about?
Yeah, so right now, we are planning on opening those streets until East Hubbard is done at the same time. And then we might discuss opening the streets. Our concern is bringing someone down Brady and coming into a dead end.
Right.
Hubbard or with Locust and then someone trying to turn. We've already had a handful of private vehicles drive through the construction project, drive over our curbs that could damage our curbs, so.
Obviously, we allowed that process on Locust Street during the time and on Chestnut Street too. But it's different when we've got brand new stuff and allowing people to turn around and hop the curb and stuff like that where little.
So there is still a possibility, once East Hubbard's done, that we might open Brady and that our far section of Hubbard.
Very much so, yeah.
Okay, but that we could, that might happen before November. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, good.
Keyword was might.
Might, I know.
Thank you.
Keep hope alive. Thanks.
Okay, Delara.
I do just have a couple of things. First is, I know we've discussed the HGC many times. And the last thing, we were kind of on hold waiting for Jason Raymaker to come back and speak with us. So I reached out to Jason. HGC had a meeting last Monday, I believe, just to see if there was anything to report. And he said because they've had such a change in the membership of that group, that he kind of wanted to wait for a little bit to see how everything worked. But the group is going to be looking at the study group's recommendations and hopefully come up with some, some plans and ideas. So he said he'd reach back out if or when they needed anything from council. So right now, they're just gonna kind of take a look at things and move forward. Next thing would be like wayfinding. I didn't see, I was just gonna update real quick that we did have a couple of cool meetings about wayfinding. So Teresa, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, or Joel, or Parker, but we had a stakeholders' meeting and it was really awesome. So after that stakeholders' meeting, the steering committee met and kind of went over just some of the things that they had recommended. So we'll be looking to get a report. Did they say exactly when we'd get that report? Was it sometime this month?
Yeah, we'll meet again. The steering committee and city staff will meet again with Guide Studio on August 28th via a Zoom meeting. They're based in Ohio, as you both know. So that'll be a virtual meeting that we'll have with them next. And then I think we've got one more scheduled meeting in October, September, and then two more in October, and that'll be the final deliverable.
So they were very clear that this is just a plan. So something for the city to have in hand if we want to move forward with some of their recommendations. But the process was really, really cool. Like I said, like a bunch of city stakeholders from the library, the hospital, all the schools, just, you know, city council, city staff. And we did a bunch of different exercises. And it was, it was neat to see how everybody felt about town and what was the important things to direct people to. So I'm looking forward to seeing what their plan is. And then the last thing is that I had mentioned a few meetings ago that I was gonna meet with some concerned citizens about recycling. We did have that meeting. And just from their feedback, they really would like to see the city pursue the county resource recovery program. So just wanted to report back about that. I've had a couple conversations also with Broken Arrow because they're trying to get their, I can't think of the name, waste hauler or something like licensure, which would allow them to take recycling. Right now, they can take paper and cardboard for free. But if they get that designation, then they could also do recyclables. And whether that's something we could partner as a city, I'm not sure. But just kind of preliminary discussions with them. But if, as a council, we can kind of keep that on the radar. That's something that we could put as ballot language next year, whether we wanted to have everybody vote to get into that program. So that was it for me.
Thank you, Delara. Bill, do you have anything this evening?
I do not.
On table? David?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, Peter, do you have any?
I just have one thing that I know we've discussed in the past is the city hall restrooms being open during events. Joel and I have briefly talked about it. My feeling is Joel doesn't really feel comfortable with it. I don't know, what does everybody else think about it? Because I thought we had discussed it to have it open, but then it wasn't open a couple of times, so.
Yeah, I thought we said we were gonna give it a try and see how it went, kind of thing.
I thought so too, but.
Were there issues or?
So the riverfront restrooms have been vandalized multiple times with cameras, with signs saying you are being watched, and with large signs saying no loitering. The J.C. Riverfront, or the J.C. Park Restrooms have been vandalized to the point where the doors were ripped off the stalls. And we have fifteen week, we have a fifteen week backorder on those restroom stalls. Staff is uncomfortable, and when I say staff, not just me, but city hall staff is uncomfortable opening up this building to that potential. I know councils discussed it, but I don't think I ever got like a direction from the council of the whole. I know it's been discussed, but it's never been a direction, hey, we would like the bathrooms open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day or seven days a week, you know, seven to eleven or whatever the timeframe you would like. I believe our riverfront restrooms are seven to eleven.
That is correct.
So we have that on a timer. We do have the capability here to put our doors on a timer twenty-four hours a day. We could just have them unlock at seven in the morning and then the doors lock back up. We do have cameras here. We do have a DVR or old trash, now called a DVR. But we have a recording system that records, you know, images, just not images inside the restroom.
Yeah, if I may, I also recall as part of that conversation, some stipulations with, with cameras and with the door system. And the camera work was just done on Friday while Joel was out of the office. With a camera in the lobby was repositioned to better face the, the entryway to the restrooms where it was previously, it was cut off. So that was realigned. And then new cameras were added to the front door entrance and the back door entrance of the building. So like I said, as I recall, that was part of the conversation as well that before any of, any of the rooms were allowable during times that staff is not in the building, that we wanted to meet those requirements with cameras and with the automatic door openers, so.
So does that make you, with the cameras being moved, does that make you feel more comfortable or not?
My level of confidence has not changed, but I am, I mean, council wants us to open this building seven days a week, and from a time to a time, just tell us to do it and we will work on the programming and get it done immediately.
I think, as I recall from our last discussion, I think one of the things that we were trying to figure out is if we could limit access to other areas.
The gate.
Because we don't want, I know, because Joel doesn't like the high school gates in the halls, which are not, are not pretty.
The way those look, that's correct. But if you're gonna have this open, the restrooms, I mean, it's probably easier for people to come in off the back, unless you're shopping on this street, and it's easier to come off the front. So I would say just open it all the way up. And I don't know why, I mean, because the bathrooms are in the middle of the hallway.
Well, so with the, is the elevator always accessible or can we turn that off?
The elevator is currently controlled by a key card.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about people going into the basement. And the door at the bottom of the stairs is currently controlled by a key card.
Okay.
Again, if this is a direction, I mean, I know you've discussed it, but I never felt there was like a, you know, a majority saying, this is what we want done and this is when we want it done. You do know there's concerns from staff, but that's okay. Staff has concerns about things we do all the time. And we can respond and, you know, do as directed.
When I, I looked at the, the DDA report and they talked about wanting bathrooms outside of the, the riverfront, I thought, didn't we already have this discussion?
And that was what, I had a couple of people come to me during a Saturday night and ask why it wasn't open.
And then we do, like, I do remind the businesses that it's against Michigan plumbing code to say your restrooms aren't open to the public or only open to shoppers or customers. Those signs are a violation of the Michigan State Plumbing Code. But, you know, if you're, if you're open to the public, you're open to the public.
Go ahead. I would like to just see it done on a trial basis at least, to see if we have many issues. And if we don't offer it, I guess that would be my, my thoughts.
Maybe try it this fall and see.
What do we want the hours to be like?
Wasn't it during events that we discussed?
Oh, that's what I'm saying, is it during events or is it all the time extended beyond normal city hall hours? Because of course, while city hall's open, the restrooms are available. It's, we're talking the time that they're not open here.
I don't think it needs to be open at seven in the morning. I would say when you guys open up, you know, obviously, the building is open. So maybe weekends even eight or eight-thirty. But then at night.
So one thing we run into an issue with that is we have two tenants here that rent spaces here. And those two tenants sometimes have late hours or early morning hours for the customers. And they unlock the building, per the lease agreement, they can unlock the building.
Okay.
Once we put the timers onto a system, a key lock can override that system. So it would be my recommendation that we just say it's open at seven and locks at eleven. And we just let our two tenants know, you know, don't schedule a point. If you're gonna schedule an appointment before seven, you'll just have to meet them at the door and let them in the building. I mean, when I walk to work at seven in the morning, I see a handful of people walking around the downtown. Mandy's is open for breakfast, serving coffee at sometimes five-thirty, even though they are say six. So I mean, activity is happening in this town, you know, before eight o'clock.
Okay, so do we want to do it on a trial basis then?
Yeah. Okay, there doesn't need to be emotion. I fully understand. We can do seven days a week and we'll pick the hours. We'll mimic what we have on the riverfront restrooms and we'll go from there.
Yeah, let's just see. Yep. Okay. One thing I'd like to bring up too is I did get a call from Charlie, our constable. He, health-wise, is not very, doing very well. He's lost a lot of weight and he's having lots of health issues. He felt really bad because parades were his thing, that he can't be in the, in the fair parade. So he wanted to let us know ahead of time. With that being said, the fair parade is on our first meeting in September, the eleventh. So we need to get that canceled if everyone's on board with that. Okay? And that's all I have right now. So we will move on down to the next item on the agenda, which is the review of the economic development report from Michael Keela and Dave Redding.
Love the sound of rain.
Oh, yep, I, I didn't. Don't want to talk about it. Oh my God, Jesus Christ.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morgan?
Michael. Okay, thank you very much for making this time available. I'm gonna take you back in this very brief presentation to January the fourteenth in this very room, sitting right over here. A fundamental and first question was asked is, do we have a need for the City of Alleghen Economic Development Corporation? You'll remember, we placed it in hiatus. And it's, it remains there in kind of an on-call, on-needed basis. So the question is, do we need a replacement? The second question was, are there current unmet needs in the economic environment? And so this, this study was commissioned by you and this is the, the final report from that study. You will see that on the very first page here, your packet is broken down into four pieces. The first is the summary that I intend to convey to you today, right now, in person. The second is a matrix. And that matrix describes some definitional terms. We'll come back to that in a brief second. The third section down is indeed the final report that has an executive summary and findings. The, there is one minor error, and it's a typographical error, is the, the opportunities for unmet needs is in section five point seven, not five point eight. And for that, it was missed during editing. And at the very end, are two maps. So I will, I will proceed from here. To start with, what is happening today? The core city is well-supported with economic and enterprise support by various groups, most of them chartered by you folks. There's the downtown manager. There's positively Alleghen. You can read the continuation of the list. From time to time, city staff, actually, we'll go out and find other ad hoc members and we'll be able to answer the questions that become necessary. So at this time, cutting directly to the chase is there is not a specific need for an EDC. It may be your pleasure, it may be your pleasure to keep one, keep it on the shelf because it does serve an established function. But it is unnecessary at that time as we take a look at the list of people, organizations that guide and advise you in your economic pursuits. Okay, so there is the first question answered. I don't think you need something different. And I don't think you have a role immediately for the Economic Development Corporation. But are there any gaps? I would like to take you, if you would please, to go to the matrix. And if you will observe the matrix, it is definitional. You will see at the top, economic development, enterprise, otherwise business development, and community development. These are three terms that are widely misused. So the study group considered it important to inform this body so that you could have, so that you could have a document that has the definitions that are authoritative, referenced, and explain, explain the different roles. Economic, so you will see in the simplest terms, these are the lanes. What we, we had common talk about, we'll stay in your lane. Well, governments largely should stay in the first lane. For business development, economic development, that is enterprise-focused, should remain in the second column. And community development is the third. As we read across, these, as you can see, are, well, so what drives each of these organizations? What is their focus? And you will see that they are subtly different. Do they work together? They sure better. But having a definition is something that we clearly understood after investigation in the study, is people were using terminologies that, that were mismatched to the activity that they were trying to conduct. So this is authoritative, it is referenced, it is here, and it gives you a, a broad understanding of the meaning of these three kinds of economic development. We'll go back to the first page. So should, should you as a council or a future council decide that you want to access land, conduct land and real estate transactions outside, outside of the organizations listed here? Then, then an economic development corporation might be what you want. That is the justification for leaving it on the shelf at this time. Now, enterprise development, business development seems to be underserved. And that is, that is the section where in, in section, in section five point seven, there is a list, a partial list, of some of the opportunities that could exist in business development. These were brought to us not from the study partners, but from the action research individuals that were interviewed and gave us information from the chairs that they sit in. So the City of Alleghen also, through its city executive, believes in a core city model. That was already previously established and accepted back with the summer two thousand twenty report. Is we're focusing and we could take a look around what was the first topic that Mr. Johnson just talked about, that core central city and its activities. So we come back to that second question, and I believe it was, I believe it was Mr. Byrd. So what about everybody else? What could be done? Well, first of all, enterprise development is largely, and by definition, outside of the realm of government. You'll, you'll come to understand that completely as you read the lanes, as you read those. The Economic Development Corporation itself has no place in those activities. It holds real estate, it holds funds, it does transactions on behalf of the city. Definitionally, it doesn't fit. It's not their role. And so what could be done? The economic, the Alleghen County, let's start at a county level. The county level does not have a role that has programs associated with it for enterprise development, for everybody. What about everybody else? They have no programs. They are focusing in the role of government to act as an economic developer. So we can't look to them. Lake Shore Advantage has contract responsibilities with you all, with the county, with townships. And their primary focus, as they've indicated to me as recently as three days ago, they want to stay in this, in the main lane of economic development, not business development, using the terms in the matrix. And they're, they're in full agreement. Jennifer Owen is in agreement, Mandy's in, in agreement, so. One of their primary focuses in our area is bringing in economic activity, capturing some agricultural land. We, we do not have systems necessarily in place to address agriculture as a primary employer. It's forty percent of our, of our county. In our area, our, our farms, and they wish to be farms. And the townships would like most of that to remain the traditional farm or the corporate farm of, of the big guys that, we could mention all their names, we all know them. So what we heard from Lake Shore Advantage and what we heard from many of our respondents is business development. Enterprise development is the, is the role of chambers of commerce. They take care of the aspects of development that are associated with the effectiveness of the individual businesses. That is not government's role. In our previous work, one of the council members has said, our government is not in the place. Our city. the place, our city is not in the place of selecting winners and losers. And that matches exactly the definitions in the matrix. But then what about everybody else? We can't find anybody that says anything different than, well, that's the role of the Chamber of Commerce. Okay, so we move on. Let's look at other governments, townships. They have strategic master plans, but they do not have mechanisms to program, programmatically support enterprise, enterprise development. And they're a government. It's outside their scope. That's not what they do. So we're still looking for somebody else here. How do we take care of them? The Aligan Area Chamber of Commerce is an enterprise development organization. In theory, it is organized by its members under the leadership of a board of directors, and they have an executive director to identify the service and, and general needs of their members. In theory, they have to provide that value to their members. And what we also discovered is the Aligan Chamber of Commerce, first of all, has a difficulty in identifying what area means. Their official legal title is Aligan Area Chamber of Commerce. So that begs the very first question. What does area mean? And crickets. So, so that is, that has become something that, that they're very, very interested in, is defining that area. Our study group has determined that their membership extends out into what is Aligan. So what's Aligan? 49010? I'll refer you to the maps at the back of your packet. Don't do that now. And you will see that it overlays government sectors, it overlays where the members of the Chamber of Commerce are actually conducting their business. It takes care of everybody else that's not in the core central city model. So our conclusion is that they are the most appropriate existing organization to address business development. You have to understand ahead of that, there is a relationship between government and cooperation in that process, but it's not your role directly. So who is it? It sure looks like a well-functioning Chamber of Commerce, following some of the unmet needs that the study listed. You can find those, you can read them, you can think about them. And I'm certainly not going to read them to you. The area of 49010 contains many of the members of the Chamber of Commerce. That's where they come from. We have anecdotal information, verifiable, and verifiable information, that people have asked to become a member of the chamber, to be given the response, well, you're not in, you're not in the downtown city, so you can't belong. And upon hearing that, at least two of the executive directors of the chamber went, yikes, that's not what we're about. So zip codes, which we learned during the 2020 study, summer of 2020, what we learned is, that's the lowest level of granularity to compare numbers meaningfully. So why not join the club? And here is a very important component, and it's, it's the next to the last thing. 49010, as a business development concept, it represents everybody else without political bias, without laying finger pointing, without a township saying, that's the county, that's Lake Shore Advantage, that's the city of Aligan, where is all of this happening? It is definitional for the Chamber of Commerce to say, to say, our area is 49010. And it neutralizes all of the political fray, all of those kinds of, of events. We are very nearly at the end. During the study, our, our very first working process, and you will find this is number two in your final report, this, the study group will investigate and evaluate, number one, above the fray of politics and political boundaries. We aren't getting into, we're not getting into who owns what, who's what, who did that in the past. It is an objective analysis above political boundaries. We are avoiding negativity. One of the things that we heard is across the area that a new idea is met immediately with, oh, no, we've never done it that way. So our approach has been a positive approach that doesn't look for all the things that can't happen, but look for the things that can happen. And to remain positive and to remain apolitical have been a priority of this study. The study itself, by name, is included on your final page of, of the presentation here. It was a quasi-action research methodology. There were two components that we were attempting to link, the current state with current unmet needs. Action research draws information to say, if this is true, then what do we do? That's the basis of action research. It's not, oh, it's, here's all of the things you should do, and then crickets. It's, what do the experts say? These are the things we could do to meet those unmet needs. And there, and there's a long list, there's 18 or 15 or something like that. The, the level of significance is a, a single utterance, utterance, meaning when Greg King, when he was asked the direct question, Greg King is with Lake Shore Advantage, and, and when he was asked the direct question, who handles enterprise development? He said, chambers of commerce. That's a single utterance. That's, that's the level that we captured here, down to authoritative people making statements on their professional opinions. And saturation was reached, saturation meaning, is the study done? It was reached when we weren't getting any new information. There's an obvious point that if you're rowing and you're already at shore, stop. So we have completed the charge from January the 14th. And at this time, I, I have just one other piece of business, but at this time, I'll, I'll entertain any question that you have on behalf of the committee. And I would like to thank your appointment of David Redding. It was recommended that we have council oversight, and that was valuable. That was very valuable, and it also gave face validity, a council member on this study. Secondly, one of the other close partners was Dr. Jim Connell, a wise, sage old fellow that has been here a long time, and his stories and his way of thinking were valuable to the work that's presented to you tonight. So are there any initial questions that you have?
There obviously seems to be a large focus on the Aligan Chamber of Commerce. Have they been involved at all, or have they seen the results of this yet?
That's a very good question, and thank you for that question. This presentation will be given in a work session tomorrow evening with the chamber at the request of their new executive director, who has also seen the preliminary final report, which is something I'm very careful with as a professional researcher and evaluator. That's why these weren't in your packet. You asked me to come and give you a report as an evaluator and a researcher. That's what you get first. But there is the courtesy that you describe, and so we have had conversations, and we have broad support. We didn't consent anybody, meaning we didn't ask anybody's permission to use their name in this report. We did that intentionally. Some of Jim's wisdom is, it's just four guys having coffee. You learn a gap, a lot when four guys are having coffee. I've heard the city executive say, sitting downtown 8th Street in Holland, Michigan, you learn a lot when you just listen to people having coffee. But, so, so we approached it that way. Lake Shore Advantage understands and is fully in support, after a series of meetings with them. And the chamber, with its previous executive director, previous president, and, I believe, current president, all are aware of not the fine details of this, of which they will learn tomorrow evening. The chair of the county commission is aware, as is the District Four representative aware of preliminary reports. There will be nobody surprised by the content of things that we ask specifically the Chamber of Commerce. They see, they seem to be largely on board. It's a big elephant to bite, but one, one bite at a time, you can eat an elephant. So Mr. Redding, David, is there anything you wish to add as a, a study sponsor, as a overseer, and as a contributor?
Well, first of all, thank you for delivering the report, and thank you for your time on it. I, I agree that we've got, so far it seems, broad support for the direction the study's going, and we'll look forward to hearing more from the chamber directly as a board of directors, what they plan to do to move forward.
So if there is an ask, which is another, if there is another way to say that, is we don't have an ask for you, other than to go, oh, wait a minute, maybe we should be supporting this enterprise development organization in our town? Maybe we should help ask for standards of their performance and, and how they, how they proceed. But that's outside of my scope. It's outside of my scope of this study, when I say my, for an evaluation of Lake for, uh, Lake Shore Advantage, how effective and efficient are they working for you? Not our concern. We're not, we just want to know what they do, and we have that detailed here in the report. So, Delora.
I just want to also reiterate what Council Member Redding had said, that I appreciate all the time that you went, put into this. Clearly, you reached out to multiple people multiple times, so I do feel like the study was very well done and comprises a lot of the questions that we had. I agree with you that a well-functioning chamber can absolutely handle some of these things, and I know that our chamber has gone through some issues and that there is some concern. I spoke with a former chamber director with some concerns about, about where that was heading, but hopefully with the new director, we can get in that right direction again. I was just going to say, I kind of feel like our chamber has acted in that community development silo as well, just based on some of the projects that they've put on in the past. But based on your study, what would your recommendation be, if you were to give a recommendation, to continue to have the EDC on the shelf, so to speak?
Absolutely.
In case of those...
Mr. Redding, do you agree? Let's, let's take these categorically.
Real estate and property, et cetera.
Do you agree that that is a place that, that it should remain?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. And there was another implied question in there, and that, and that is, the ask, and I'll reiterate this, for the Aligan City Council and the staff in which you engage, full support of the people that are the business owners, that are the enterprise owners, that are doing their very best. As you take a look at the list of things they told us, wow, I, you know, maybe, maybe as an organization, as an entity, that would be something you would consider. But again, it's not our job to evaluate their effectiveness. We have eight or 10 pages, typed written pages, of explanations from dialogue. We've converted anecdote to evidence. We won't want, we did not want anybody to say something that could not be taken from anecdote to evidence, that it could be proven. And whether we believe who, who's giving us the authoritative thing, that's a different question. But here is your report, and, oh, Mr. Ants?
So what roles would the EDC have in the future? From my standpoint, what I kind of see, the EDC's future would be brownfields, because I believe we're required to have it for those, for expansion of an industrial park, or development of new neighborhoods, or new property development that's currently underutilized by the city or undeveloped.
Exactly right.
So.
Exactly right.
That's why I think it should stay on the shelf, and, and if we see anything in the future, that's when we look to it, to take it back off the shelf to help in that development.
Yes. And as a tidying up, yes, thank you, that, I think that's a great concluding statement. But as a matter of tidying up, something that's stated in the report is that the EDC's appointed members, their terms have all expired, and I'm acting sort of a de facto chair, because you asked me to do so a year ago as a final report. Well, be careful when you ask somebody for something, you might get another, another request, which did happen. But I will also, I, I believe this will go to Ms. Cleaver, as the clerk, I am formally resigning from the Economic Development Corporation, and it's kind of perfunctory because my term's already expired. And there's no, no quorum there to say that I get to be president or speak on behalf of them, but that was an important criteria with some of the previous members. They said, well, if it's on the shelf, I'm not sure, I want someone using my name, saying I'm a member, and so I'm just cleaning up my part of that.
The only other thing that I could see the EDC being utilized for would be development, maybe of things that would attract businesses that are actually government items, roads, infrastructure, better internet, if we wanted to have more capabilities in the city for fiber, because our internet here is not of the highest quality, like some communities, where you can get fiber and the like. It's very expensive to get fiber here, so for some businesses that require that, as, as kind of a notion to have, it's nice if they can get it at a lower cost, because it's already developed in the area. So that would be something maybe in the future that the EDC, I think, would be used for, is those type of projects. That's, you know, since they're, we're not in the enterprise development, we're in the economic development, we're in making the environment good for a business to come to, making so that, and that includes internet, roads, things like that, that are government functions.
And in the, and that's very, very correctly stated by our understanding, the study group's understanding. But interestingly, it might be a value for council and government and a city executive to interact with a county organization. For example, to answer the specific question of broadband, the, the Aligan County organi, as an organization, has a very, very large and expansive broadband program that is well-funded and is in the process of being executed. So selective partnering, maybe not thinking about the traditional partners, but to think about, in those terms, in those definitions, who are my partners in government? Townships have a huge say in what hap, a huge say in what happens in our, in our county, et cetera, et cetera. We could, we could go on, and now we're starting to turn into 4G coffee conversation. So if you have nothing more, I'll stop. Am I done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence in asking and, and being receptive to, to this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next on the agenda is discussion regarding a proposed development of Pingree Park. Joe and Deb Leverance. Joel, you, okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Here we are again. As I'm sure Joel has probably informed you that my last endeavor of trying to rework the powerhouse has kind of gone to the wayside, because Eagle has made such that it can't be taken off the list as a, a regulated dam for the state of Michigan, so that completely took that off the table. So I'm always looking for opportunities, and I always look for out-of-the-box opportunities. I look for ways that, to utilize areas that a lot of people think are, are wasted, or inoperable, or too expensive to explore, or too crazy to explore. too crazy to explore. Joel had asked me, actually, a couple of other opportunities rather than this. One of them was, you know, the area in the back of the Mill District. There's, you know, a lot of land back there that's also floodplain. But in my research, according to building codes in floodplains or floodways, and what the Eagle and the DNR looks at as far as downstream effects of anything you do in a floodplain or floodway, Leslie Dixon's property would be immediately impacted by anything I did on the city's property there. So it's, it's almost a, a non-starter that, that I could do anything there. The fascinating thing about Pingree Park, or the former Pingree Park, is even though it may flood, it's not a floodway. The river flows by it, not through it. I don't know if any of you guys have ever walked back onto the island of the Mill District back there, but when you go back there, you will see that when the river flows over the island, you get massive amounts of branches and trees that are built up around trees that are solidly in the ground. You can see that the water has carried a lot of debris through the island. If you go onto Pingree Park, or formerly Pingree Park, there is no such thing there. So the water might rise, but it doesn't flow through it. So that's a, a much, much better opportunity for me to do what I'm proposing here. It's a, a nice piece of property. It's, if you've read your reports, it's, it's largely been ignored since the eighteen hundreds. You could see that Main Street, it was called a different street back then, I can't remember what the name of it was, but that had gone down as far as the Park Street had gone down. I believe what had happened, because if you go to the end of, of Main Street now, and you look at where the road ends, you'll see it's a pretty steep drop. And I believe what occurred is when they did the water treatment facility, they excavated a lot of that material out of that area, that, because that used to be a nice long slope. I believe they excavated that out as fill for the water treatment facility. So, they kind of created a little lowland there. But, I, I believe what I can do there, DNR usually requires that if you fill an area, you have to create a area for the water to go, if you, if it doesn't go where you're filling. And by excavating out what I'm gonna call the moat, all right, we can put some of that material into that area, and I can make that drier land for where I would have vehicles parking. I desire to not have vehicles on the, we're gonna call it an island, not to have vehicles on the island, with the exception of, like, maybe golf carts for collecting trash, or lawn maintenance equipment, that type of stuff. But, I really want to keep it as, as rustic as I can keep it. I don't want to pour a single piece of concrete anywhere on that island. My intention is to create the properties elevated on stilts, if you want to call it that. I want to have those drove into the ground, not drilled and cemented into place. I want to keep it as, as environmentally unimpacted as I can possibly keep it, because I think it's a beautiful nature piece of property as it sits. It's completely unutilized. It, it has no public access at this point, unless you really want to venture down a crazy hill there at the end of Main Street. There's no access down at the bottom of Park Street. There is some access along the riverway there from the bottom of the power, or the water treatment facility there. But, really, there, there's no way for the public to get in there. So, that would be one of the other challenges, is I would need to create an access to it. I could create an access at the end of Main Street, but that would be difficult, because now it's quite, quite a slope there, which means I'd have to bring in about as much fill as they took out of it to create the water treatment facility. So the best access, I'm thinking, is going to be right next to the last property that's on Park Street, between it and the water treatment facility. I believe there's a, a tiny strip of land right there that might be large enough for me to put a driveway in there. I would have to get a surveyor out there to stake out where his corners are, and then the rest of it is obviously city property. And whether or not that would be wide enough, if not, then we'd have to see if you and the city would agree to possibly moving the fence a little bit, so that I could create a driveway back into there. Everything that I've read, as far as permitting on the Eagle website, largely depends on, like I said, what the downstream effect will be of, of doing anything in a floodplain. They have certain rules requiring certain building codes or building practices when you're dealing in that area, which I plan to solve by having the tiny houses up on stakes. So, I, I believe all of the permits that would be required are accessible. I think we can pull that off. The biggest problem is going to be getting water and sewer to it. I know Joel said that the city has no money to contribute to the project. The city ordinances require that if you're within two hundred feet of a water or sewer system of the city, you're required to hook up to it. This island is not within two hundred feet of, of either of those services. So, I don't know if, if there can be any kind of a cooperation between the city and me, you know, maybe partially financing, like, maybe I cover the labor and you cover the parts, or something. I don't know, but, you know, it, it can be done. I believe we can do this with what they call horizontal drilling, or horizontal excavating. Not excavating, what's the term for it?
Drill.
Horizontal drilling. So that way, we don't have to trench. I won't have to disturb the soil as much, like where you have to dig, dig down with an excavator and pull four or five feet of earth out of there. We can do with the horizontal drilling and not disturb the land. I believe Eagle would be very happy with that particular solution to the problem. So that's kind of my plan. I believe, I'm, at this point, appropriating about thirty thousand dollars to what I think I could bring in the, the services and clear the land. Not clear it entirely, I just want to clear the brush. I want to save as many hu, as many trees as humanly possible. I want to clear out the trees that are down. If there's dead trees, cut them down, and cut all the brush back and make it all nice and clean, and, so you could see through the whole area. And I believe I have enough money to possibly do four rental units. I'm trying to avoid calling it a campground. I would prefer to call it a detached motel, but that's gonna be determined on whether or not I can bring in the services. If I can't bring in the services, then it'll have to be tiny houses with self-contained units. The state of Michigan requires that if you have more than five campsites, then you have to get licensed as a campground. I'm considering doing four, so that gets me under that threshold, but there still might be some other licensing requirements and stuff I might have to look into. So preferably, I would rather be permanent residences on stilts, and have them as short-term rental units, like motel rooms. And the rest of the property, I would like to dress up. I would like to put a trail all the way around the perimeter. I'd like to put some exercise stations, or obstacle course-type fun things around the perimeter. I would put a gazebo, or a, um...
Pavilion.
Pavilion, in the center of it, so that we could have barbecues and things of that nature there. So, there it is.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Does anybody have questions for Joel? Go ahead.
Joel and Deb first. I really appreciate that you continue to have a vision. You know, it's really neat to see that you have these dreams and that you're actively, you know, going for them. So I appreciate your continued commitment to the Allegan community, I really do. I love this idea. This is reminiscent of a plan that we had for the Mill District that had been presented with like a, kind of elevated camping. So I think it's really great. But I do wonder, would you at all be interested in just having this being a tiny home community, where, you know, it could be developed as a community for permanent residents?
In essence, let's call this the beginning of, of Phase One. I've only got two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, I'm, I'm guessing, based on, on the research that I've done, building these units myself, with the exception of skilled trades, I have to obviously pay for electricians and plumbers. But building the units myself, I, I'm, I'm approximating, I can build them for twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars each. So I'm, I'm guessing I can do four of them. As those start paying, you know, in, then there's a possibility that I can start expanding. There might even be a possibility that I could bring in, I don't want to say a partner, but I can bring in an investor, that maybe they would build additional units, and pay me a commission off of what they do. At some point, if, if that doesn't work out as vacation rentals, then they very, very may well be sold as individual houses. Because one of the dreams that I had, if I ever won the lottery, was to build a retirement community of tiny houses. Because there's, there is such a shortage of affordable, small houses for our retirees. I mean, it's, it's horrible. And for, it might be difficult in here because of the steps. So I'm not sure, I was thinking, how could I make these handicap accessible? But, there is such a need for retirement communities in the Allegan area, that I would love to do something like that. And then if there's a way I could figure out how to make these ADA accessible, you know, I gotta bring in, you know, someone to tell me how high I have to build them, so that it's above floodplain. I don't know if this, do you guys have GPS?
You would, you would want to contact an engineer.
Okay. So, they would tell me how high my stilts have to be, so that it's a foot above floodplain. And, I mean, if that's only two or three feet, eh, I could build a ramp for that. You know, if it's like my pictures, you know, it, it could be five or six feet, I don't know. So we, we have to weigh that out.
So I see in the agreement that you're looking for six months to kind of pursue and do some of your due diligence with one six-month extension?
Yes.
So like first step, basically checking to see if it's even feasible?
Yes. The, probably the first two or three things we'll do is, is I'm gonna get an estimate on what it'll cost to clear the land. The second would be to do what they call a pre-permit assessment with someone from Eagle. That'd be to sit down and discuss with them my ideas, and whether or not it's worth pursuing, because they might just come right out of the gate and say, no. Been there. So, so those will probably be the first two things I do. Then the, the third thing would be to get with a horizontal drilling company, to find out what the cost of that would be. And then have my, my meeting with Eagle, to say, all right, these are all the solutions I have to your questions, and what do you think?
Great. Thank you so much for that explanation for the steps.
Great, thank you.
I just echo what Delora said. I love that you're a dreamer, and that you're looking for new things, and I love, I'm the tiny house.
Deb is giving you the look as you're talking.
Our first tiny house guy, yeah.
Yeah, I love, love tiny houses, and a really cool idea to, to start off as a rentals, and then maybe develop it into something more permanent. So, yeah, I think, I think it's really exciting.
Cool. Any other questions?
Does anybody else have any more questions?
I just have a question of Joel. Like, how would we execute this? Are you looking for a motion in a regular session, or just some direction from?
The city has no desire to sell this, or the city staff has no plans, not desire plans, to sell this property. If you want to enter into a six-month agreement, that is fine, we can put on your next agenda. My advice to council is, we don't spend a dime on this project until all the boxes have been checked through the regulatory authorities. I've shared with Joe, this is an extreme long shot. I shared with Joe my excitement. As Joe mentioned, I showed him a handful of other properties in the city where a development could occur. Joe keeps on coming back to this one, which is mighty fine. We've talked to a couple engineering firms. They struggle to see how you could do this kind of development in this flood zone. It is a very heavy left, concern that was lifted today, is the Calumsey River is a super fun site. Don't be shocked if Eagle says you have to test that soil that you want to dredge from the canal, and if there's PCBs in it, it can't be put back on land. It has to go into a landfill. And it's, I think it's like a type three landfill, or something like that. It's a, type two, Tony's given this two. So, how's this landfills are type twos? Those are different from your regular landfills where household garbage goes. So again, I'll share the excitement. I shared it with Joe, and he met with me, I think, two times on this, last time an hour in my office. Really excited. The cool thing about this is the proximity to the downtown, I think, is what, you know, Joe wants to hit on, because it is an exciting place to be in Allegan right now, and, you know, people want to be, you know, close to the action, so.
It'll be golf, golf cart accessible, right?
No, because you can't take a golf cart on two-twenty-two.
Oh, darn.
But you can hop on North Main, come down north, and if the Trestle Bridge ever gets replaced, you can come in that way. A roundabout way to get, or a long way to go, but there's a way to go. That would be my only advice. So if you, if you guys want to make it formal and do it, an agreement, that's fine. But then it all, I mean, as Joe mentioned, he's gonna do all of those steps. And I would just advise all property owners, you know, know what you're getting into with some of this stuff. I don't want to see people, you know, spend good money, you know, on dreams that may not come to fruition.
You wouldn't consider other property locations?
I would like to, but the problem is, is that there's, there's folks in Allegan who think their property is worth two or three times what it actually is. Property values, if, if you're outside the city limits, should be about ten thousand dollars an acre. Within the city limits and accessible to services, should be about thirty-five thousand dollars an acre. And people are wanting sixty, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars an acre. And me, as a small developer, can't do it, and the big developers, as Joel has, has spoken with me, the big developers are like, why would we pay you this, when we can go get it for ten thousand dollars just outside the city? So I, I can't even deal with those folks. I've, you know, talked to Steve across the street. I tried to buy a portion of his building. He doesn't want to sell it. I talked to Greg Orr, next door to me, about buying a portion of his building. He doesn't want to divide it up. So I, you know, and like I said, the island back in the back there is, is way, way too hazardous to do an idea like this. And I could look at a, a small city lot, you know, Joel had talked to me about the one over in Holland, where they've got like six tiny houses on, on one, or maybe two lots combined. In fact, I even put a bid in on a piece of property that I could possibly put two houses on that lot. They rejected my offer. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of stuck with the land that nobody wants. So, here I am. I'm, I'm willing to stick my neck out there and take a shot, and, you know, whether or not, you know, Eagle will work with me, or, you know, the, the other powers that be. I think it would be a great asset to Allegan. I think it would be, I mean, super cool factor to have, you know, a bunch of essential tree houses, you know, tiny houses. I think it would be a real cool draw. I, I think it'd be great for the city of Allegan. But, if I can do it, I'll do it. And if I can't, I guess I can't. And I'll dream up something else.
And staff will work with Joel in our contacts with Eagle, and, you know, the appropriate regulatory authorities. We're not gonna leave him out to hang by himself on this, you know.
Appreciate that.
We'll coordinate those conversations, and we'll be, we'll be part of those at the, you know, at the onset, for sure. I suppose going, I don't want us to be spending money on studies, and, you know, on something until we're sure it can happen.
Okay.
I'm definitely in support of, of you pursuing this, if there's no cost to the city for that, with the understanding.
Okay. Can you see an objection to me maybe going in there? I've got a Bobcat. To just make a path through there that you could walk through and, and look at the property, like I could bring people in there to get estimates? Because right now, it, it's literally a jungle. It hasn't been touched since the eighteen hundreds. So, you know, it's, it's quite dense.
So, that's something I think we need to dive into a little more. We have to map that out. Doug, soil erosion control permits, if you're removing, is it over an acre?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
From what county?
From what I understand, there is no permit required for cutting back vegetation in a wetland. Only if you're gonna do like stump removal. And all I'm talking about is just pushing bushes and dead trees out of the way.
I don't know. I know that farmers can't mess with wetlands at all. So, I know they can't weed it, they can't move anything off of wetlands and farmland.
Well, I was looking at a piece of property...
This may be different when it's in the floodplains or something.
There was a piece of property I was looking at south of Alleghen, and it had some lakefront. And when I researched that, it said that there was no permit required for trimming back vegetation along the lakeshore or waterfront.
Yeah, and we... Joe, that's something that you and I can talk to, if you want to make a list of the things I'd like to do.
Okay.
And then staff can go through that review. There's a difference in definition between vegetation and trees.
Okay.
There just is. And I just want to make sure we check off the right boxes.
Sure.
And also trimming and removing, and that there's different, you know.
Yeah, I just want to put the city in a pickle.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
But if you want to make a list of things that you want staff to look into, and I think council would only see that list too before.
Okay. I mean, I can trudge back there, but it's...
Yeah.
You know, you're stepping over dead trees and going through picker bushes and...
So, I think at this point, we're fine with moving forward. You know, as long as you stay in contact with Joel or staff and let them know what's going on, or, you know, right?
So, just real quick, before you wrap this up, I am to understand, Joe, you would like the council to, like, enter into this agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and council, you're intrigued by it, but you want to... We're gonna list, you know, exactly what can happen during this, you know, review and stuff, so we don't get ourselves in a pickle. I don't know why I keep saying that phrase, but it's stuck in my head.
You like pickles.
I do, actually. Very much so. And then we'll put this on your August twenty-eighth meeting, regular meeting for your review and, you know, authorization. But between there, next two weeks, you and I will connect.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Very good. Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Deb. Next on the agenda is discussion regarding a rental inspection program. Joel?
All right, so PCI submitted a proposal to us, as I mentioned to you, they were. What you're seeing is the fee schedule that they are recommending. I believe you received a proposal in your packet. It's a one-time registration fee, fifty dollars. And then every time they do an inspection, which they are recommending every two years, would be sixty-five dollars. And then if they have to go back because the unit was not up to compliance, it'd be another sixty-five dollars. If there are any enforcement actions, this is similar to like when we're taking someone to court, and we need to bring in the inspector to be a witness or the expert during the court case, that's seventy-five dollars an hour. There is a yearly administration fee of five thousand dollars per year that the city would have to pay for this program. And there is a one-time onboarding fee of ten thousand. You may recall that when we had Safe Belt quote us, it was thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So, for the first year, we would spend twenty-one thousand dollars less than going to Safe Belt. And then in the subsequent years, it'd be thirty-one thousand dollars less. So, I guess what I need to know from council is, you know, do you... Are you comfortable with the numbers you're seeing on the screen? That annual fee of five thousand dollars per year, fifteen thousand dollars this first year, and the rental inspection program will be up and running?
I'm intrigued very much with that.
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna... I'm gonna work with Nick Curcio and have an actual contract typed up with PCI to bring to you at your August twenty-eighth meeting for your approval.
Joel, how do they handle multi-units?
So, the multi-units is sixty-five... So, it's a one-time fee per building. So, if you have, you know, five buildings, you would pay that fifty-dollar fee that one time to register. So, five times fifty is two-hundred-and-fifty. And then every two years, it will be sixty-five dollars per unit.
So, they would inspect all of them?
All units, correct. And then when we have a tenant complaints that come in, that's something I need to iron out with PCI a little bit more, because a tenant complaint really may not be a violation. But we have to take the tenant complaints serious.
What are we using for the state? They have certain criteria that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, what we are using is the International Property Maintenance Code.
Okay.
And it's adopted by the state of Michigan, so it's the state code.
What's the city gonna do about landlords that are non-compliant about registering?
So, they're not complying about registering, then we will be taking them to court.
Okay.
And we'll have costs incurred there. And so, we will have probably some upfront work of getting people to register their properties. Experience that I've had in my years is, it's not hard to get them to register once you explain the whole process to the landlord. In a way, it does protect the landlord too, to keep their property, you know...
Some are registered from previous times, right?
All those are all gone. The city stopped that program back in twenty-fifteen.
So, they got rid of that?
We are starting from scratch. I'm not gonna say we don't have no record. We do have a list of properties that were in that at the beginning. Also, through BSNA and our assessing database, we can run a simple report of list every property that has, that's classified as residential and has less than one-hundred percent PRE, principal residential exemption. So, Michaela already has run that report for me, and we already have a base list. And when PCI saw that we had that base list started, they were very, very grateful, so.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Forgot it.
Okay. I don't know how to respond to those, Bill. I'm sorry. I gotta go shirt and okay on those.
It was important too, to me, anyways.
Well, like I said, I'm gonna bring this back to you for you to officially approve this. So, you'll have two weeks to...
Halfway through the meeting, I'm gonna go, "Oh, oh!"
Let me know. You have my email. You can contact me. And we can go from there, but I just wanted to share, this is something I felt council wanted to get going. I'm very thankful that we're able to stay with PCI. I enjoy working with PCI. And so, you know, we'll bring this formal contract back with you with this form and put in its scope of services.
See if it's on my list here.
My only concern is the onboarding process and how that'll go and how well that'll be taken by the residents. So, I want to make sure, I kind of want to have an understanding how they think that they will proceed in first implementing the program, what their steps are gonna be, and how are they gonna get the community to know what's going on and not just come in with pitchforks and axes. What are you doing? We didn't have this. We don't want it. So, what's the advantage of having it for a landlord? Those type of things need to be explained when that program starts, because otherwise it'll just be, "You want me to pay some fee and have somebody walk around my properties? Why would I do that?"
So, Peter, you're thinking, how do they reach out to the property owner and how do they communicate this?
I would guess that probably PCI has something in place, because they did this at other proper, you know, other...
Yeah, so the question I wrote down was, how will we get this up and running? And I'll share that with PCI, and I'll be part of my report next week, or in two weeks.
I remember. How often are they gonna be inspected? Every two years, every three years?
Yeah, so PCI is recommending every two years.
Okay, because that's what the other program was.
In my previous town, we did them every three years. And then if you had no violations and you submitted annual furnace certificate, we gave you a six-year certificate, so it was every six years. So, for starting off, I would recommend at least every three years. PCI would like to do it every two years, based on their experience itself. Might as well just go with what their recommendation is.
Did you have something else, Dolores?
Okay. I was just gonna say, thanks to staff for gathering all this information, but also maintaining that relationship with PCI and having those conversations. I know that was a big concern for council, to lose them in total, so, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion regarding installation of EV charging stations. Joel?
All right, so I would like to have a conversation with council about where you would like me to go with electrical vehicle charging stations. Tony McGee is in the back of the room. I asked him to be here this evening, just in case there are questions that were answered that I... Or asked that I could not answer. So, we'll go back in history a few years to Cutler Street parking lot. And we designed that with the intent of having an electrical vehicle charging station installed in that parking lot. We contracted with Hague Automotive out of the east side of the state. They were a firm that was awarded a lot of money from the state of Michigan to install these throughout the state. They did more or less what I'm gonna call a blitz through the state, signing up communities to do this. Somewhere along the line with them, Alleghen was forgotten, not important enough. And they stopped returning phone calls and emails. We had them out here a couple of times. Most recently, early this spring? Yeah, I think it was early this spring, we did a walk-around with them. It was constantly pointing fingers in the other directions with them, whose fault it was that the project didn't go through between them and consumers. Because we put in the conduit, we put in the electrical box. They just had to drop a line and put in the station. They are not going to do it here, period. The contract we had with them was not a contract, it was their standard contract that the state approved, which was a contract of service, not a contract of construction. So, I have had multiple conversations with a handful of people in the city, and I just use the word a handful. It's not like hundreds are talking to me. It's less than six, saying, "Hey, we need electrical vehicle charging stations in downtown. Hopefully, you're putting in conduit when you do this project. You should put them in front of my store, or you should put them where I park the most when I come into downtown, et cetera, et cetera." Tony and I reached out to a handful of electrical vehicle charging station providers. We had one that responded to us. And this is, their name escapes me. It's Easy Evolution or something like that. Thank you very much. Yeah, I have it right here on my screen. Yeah, so Easy Evolution. They came out here twice, once to walk around with Tony and I to look at potential locations and just get an idea of what we are thinking or what we would want to hear from. And then they came out a second time to actually dive into the actual sites. And you've seen those sites in your reports, your packets. So, in their report, their packets, they had two types of charging stations they were recommending, an eighty-amp dual-port EV charger at thirty thousand, or a fast charger is what I'm gonna call it, at one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Before we get into like a further conversation with them about the type, even though they went that deep into it, I kind of need to hear from council on how much energy you want me... That's not a good pun. How much work you want me to put into, you know, this process? Personally and professionally, I think electrical vehicle charging station downtown would be beneficial. We have a handful of people that do own electrical vehicles. I'm not saying that it's our job to make sure they can charge up their vehicles when they come downtown. However, I do think it elevates the downtown as a destination for them. I believe when people go on road trips and they are in EVs, they type in a map, and it shows all the different places they can charge. And this could be, you know, "Oh, let's go down M forty," or up, you know, two-twenty-two or across to two-twenty-two and stop in Alleghen. They have a place for us to plug it. So, I believe there's a benefit to the community along those lines. So, with that, I just want to hear from the council on where you'd like us to go. Tony's here to answer questions. And that's all.
I would just like to, I do think we need to have one and/or two. Location is gonna be difficult, but... And I don't know enough about differences. I mean, there's a big difference in price, but...
I have a few questions on it. One, who sells the charging? So, are they providing, like, they charge the person? Because it's not free to charge a vehicle. Who's charging the money to charge a vehicle? Are they collecting that?
No, so there's two ways we can set this up. One way to set these up is that it is free to the user, but costs the city, because the city would have to have an electric meter. The other way we can charge, set this up, is they put a, more or less, a credit card reader on that thing. We have an account. They swipe their card. We collect the money.
And on that model, is there any money to be made to offset the cost of installation and maintenance?
Thank you. So, there's always...
I'm just, because you're talking...
Let's be honest, there's always costs to be made to offset it. But if we charge a penny and it costs thirty thousand dollars, are you really offsetting it? If the question is, you're trying to be whole on this, that I don't know.
And that would be my, you know, what's the ROI? Like, if we can charge this for this, how much charging would we have to do to get there? Who has to provide the maintenance for these? Because I've heard horror stories of people going to a community thinking there's a charger only to find that it's broken. And that doesn't bode well for somebody coming in. We do currently have electric vehicle charging at the hospital and a couple other locations. But, yeah, that's my main thing, like, who's paying for, you know, because I'm not gonna pay for the electricity for somebody to charge freely off the city's dime. That's just not right to make the taxpayers have to pay for other people's drives.
So, all three of these estimates we received includes three years of operations and maintenance. So, it's like a three-year warranty if something goes wrong. So, at least for the first three years, we would be, I don't want to say protected, because I don't know what that warranty agreement looks like, because we haven't dove that deep into this yet. But, you know, there is some protection there.
And on the previous contractor that failed to provide, have we contacted the state and have we contacted our reps to go after that? If they've got a lot of money from the state to put those in, we shouldn't just say, "You got all this money from the state to put these in," and then just kind of push us off to the side after you promised to do X and never did?
Yeah, so to answer your question, yes. Tony has sent skating emails representing, or not representing, but on behalf of me and the city of Alleghen, to our representatives, to his contacts, to people, you know, in the bureaucracy at the state, not just the representatives, but the administrators, you know, about the shortcoming of this company.
Some of the research that I've done, have you checked with General Motors, Tesla, Chrysler, Ford? They're putting in charging stations at different municipalities? Because they want them? Has that been checked?
So, as I mentioned, we reached out to several companies. I do not know if I contacted Ford, but that's stuff we can look into.
And also, what was, I was, the research I did, most charging would be anywhere from nine to fifteen dollars cost. They didn't say anything about anybody doing it for free, but...
I believe all the Tesla superchargers at the Myers are free.
You have an account?
I don't know.
It's like, your car comes with a certain capabilities?
Okay, like a car, yeah.
With the Teslas?
I know when we installed them first in Holland, they were all free through the Board of Public Works. So, all the chargers in downtown Holland were free.
Most of them charged. I think GM and, I know Ford or GM are both doing agreements with Tesla to use their supercharging network.
GM is.
I think Ford might also be, because there's a couple of them, because they needed to build out their networks, and Tesla had the network, so.
Joel, so we already do have the Cutler Street lot that's wired for a charging station?
So, we're ready to go there.
Okay, so I guess for me, I would say pursue one at that lot, where we already have some of that infrastructure there. Tony, do you know if we have any, like, grant opportunities?
You probably gotta yell that for not being told by a certain city manager. I'm gonna walk up here first.
Thank you. That's actually, we called the state about grant opportunities, and they gave us this list of names to start with. There's nothing now, but with all the money still flowing around, there could be something within the next year. We'll continue to monitor that. If we see the opportunity, we'll go after it.
Thank you. And Peter, I agree with you about collecting on that. I feel like that's something the city could do, perhaps put a surcharge, and then they pay for the electricity. But it looks like they're out of Vicksburg, so hopefully if there's maintenance to be done, they're relatively close, or they could have maintenance.
In regards to grants, real quick, Consumers does have a rolling rebate program. The problem with that is they run out of their money real quick. And so, Consumers has just said, "Once it's installed, fill out the form, and if it's there, you get the rebate. If the money's gone, you don't get the rebate." So, they, I mean, and they just do it, you know, every year. And it's just a real process with them, so... But they don't, they won't even look at your application until you've actually installed it. So, you can't bank on that. So you can't bank on that rebate as a cost savings.
Joel, do you mind if I add one thing on that we were talking about? Unfortunately, the charges that Consumers looks at doing are the $135,000 ones, because they sell more electricity on those, so they tend to favor those charges on the rebate program, just as an FYI.
Thank you, Tony. Is there anything else on this?
I know you all find this really hard to believe, but I'm very in favor of having our electric chargers in Alligan.
And I agree with Delora, you know, since Cutler Street is set up for one, it'd be a good place for one, so... In the plans, Joel, I know we've run conduit, or we are going to run conduit and wiring and stuff everywhere. Would it be feasible to put one up at any time?
Yeah, I would say since we have handles spread throughout the street system, it should be feasible for us to pop a sidewalk square, put in the foundation and do this work. You know, the areas we had them look at really are the Cutler Street, because it's primed and ready to go, that's why they were in that map. The Water Street area is one that we have lots of landscaping, so it's easy to do there. And then the Hubbard Street, we hope to do some work in that parking lot next summer, and so that's easy for us to do there.
Okay, great, all right. If there's nothing else on this, we'll move on down to review of the council agenda. Was there anything different on that, or was good as to go? Okay. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn the study session until, let's go 7:05 for the regular meeting. Regular meeting to order, please. First item on the agenda is the roll call. Michaela, please.
Sure. Councilmember Zeder.
Present.
Councilmember Hands.
Present.
Councilmember Andrus.
Here.
Councilmember Redding.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bird.
Here.
And Mayor Galloway.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Michaela. Next, if we could have everyone stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. 4A, approval of the regular council meeting agenda for August 14th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next is number five, approval of the minutes. 5A, approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 24th, 2023, council meeting. Did you have anything different on that?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
May I second?
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is public hearings and adoption of ordinances. 8A is public hearing of the Oprah application for 128 Locust Street and adoption of resolution 2325.
I'll kick this off. Before council tonight is a, you'll have to hold a public hearing after my short presentation. But Dan and Erin Dewey are in the audience tonight, they are the owners of 128 Locust Street. They've been in the process since 2020, was probably my first phone call with you and MEDC to redevelop 128 Locust Street. They have successfully been awarded a grant on their own accord with the state through the CRP program. As part of that grant, the city is required to make a contribution, as with other programs that receive a CRP grant or an MEDC rental rehab grant. The city's contribution is typically an Oprah tax abatement. You'll recall a couple of years ago, I believe council, you updated your Oprah policy, saying that you will do a six-year tax abatement, and then if you met, if the project met certain criteria, you give additional years. So this is a six-year tax abatement plus two additional years, since it is a mixed-use project, and the building will be fully rehabbed when completed. So it would be an eight-year Oprah certificate. We did reach out to the Deweys, and I don't know if we got a response back, but if they do, if they're doing energy efficient improvements, and I think they, they're shaking their head yes, you could do a nine-year certificate, because that energy efficiency got you to the nine, and then if you're doing low-income housing, that got you to 10, and 10's the maximum that the city does. But if they wanna talk about the project, they're more than welcome to come up to the podium and let council know what your plans are with the project. And then after they're done talking, you can open the floor for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Joel.
Hi, I'm Erin Dewey, I did not prepare anything. However, we did buy the building in 2020, and I have been a business owner for over 20 years inside of Perrigo. I offer a repetitive injury therapy program for all their manufacturing workers on all three shifts at all of their manufacturing locations. And when COVID came, a lot of those clients could not come on campus, their badges were turned off. So we bought a building at the very start of COVID, and were able to see all of our clients in the back door for services. And then we allowed Matt Adams to have his arcade in the front of our building, because he needed a place to land before he could create his 118 tilt. That being said, it took us this entire time to find the right grant. And so we do have a Build My, M-I, community grant that is awarding $250,000 to put towards our building, because we need to take that facade off that was put on back in the 60s and then put all the windows back in. White box, the upstairs, that has not been utilized since Nob and Tube was in town. And so there will be two two-bedroom, two-full-bath apartments. They're about 900 square foot apiece, there's nothing comparable downtown, there's no two-bedroom, two-full baths. So you potentially could have two roommates with their own bathrooms and living spaces up above. So those will be completed upon the project ending. And then the main floor space will also continue to be three therapy rooms in the back of the building, and then a multi-use space in the front where we'll offer yoga in many multitudes, yoga for sciatica, yoga for COPD, things that are more medical-based. So the building will be Locust Corner Wellness Center, and you will see a variety of opportunities for the community to come inside and use the programming that, not only myself with my business, but another yoga business will be in to kind of help instigate that whole project, so... What, we have gotten approval from the grant, we've gotten approval from our bank loan, our contractors are on vacation right now. But as soon as all the things start lining up, the Oprah, if it becomes available to us as well, we should be able to begin in the fall, which almost aligns with the street project. So that was our ultimate goal. So do you have any questions for me about the building or what we're planning on doing?
What's the exterior facade gonna look like?
Yeah, so when they put that shell up around the building, there is an air gap around the entire building, so the brick was preserved. So we assume the brick is of good quality, but it was also painted back in the day. Dan will show you some pictures. So our goal would be that we would likely need to paint the building, modernize the front of the building, which has all been approved through the Alligan Historic District. We went through that whole process as well. So we have the approval. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, nice, very good. Yeah, I'm excited about this.
Okay, awesome, well, if you need anything else, I'll be right over here.
Congratulations. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing at 7:15. There is no comment, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:15. Okay, and then we need to adopt resolution 23.25.
So very quickly, if they are doing energy efficient windows and stuff, then your motion should be to adopt resolution with a nine-year Oprah certificate, not an eight, just to be, just to be clear.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I make a motion to adopt this resolution with the change to nine years.
I support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Anyone who has any public comment, please step up to the podium, please.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for my antics. My, because I made this personal, with a little help from everybody up here that I had react, had to have talked to. I would like to start this all over again. Right now I have a shut-off bill for $118. There's a $41 bill right here. All this comes about, came about because Danielle Byrd somehow went above and beyond, to me, she went above and beyond her job description. She sent me a bill that had water turned on in my name. She sent me a bill, had water turned on in my name, sent it to my home address in, out on Hundred Twenty-first. She didn't send it to two seventeen Lincoln. Okay, once I get the first bill, I did like anybody else up here would do. I called and found out how I have a bill in my name. Everybody up there would have did that. So my first interaction with Danielle, she tried to explain the ordinance to me. I told her, send me the ordinance so I can read it for myself. She didn't send them to me. So the next month, this is when you guys first met, me was on the, one of your first council meetings. I talked to her that same day, and I asked her about the ordinance again. She said she sent them. I said, well, it's funny, I have my water bill, but I didn't get the ordinance. She says, the post, she doesn't run the post office. And then she turns around and said, I'm lucky that she didn't backdate it. In other words, to me, shut up, pay the bill, go away. After coming down here to this meeting, yes, it was personal once I got that threat. I received the bill, the ordinance from this young lady right here, I think it was, after, after I came up here and spoke. Two days later, next day later, I get a call from Joel Dai and his secretary. The secretary gets on the phone first. She apologizes for Danielle. I tell her, you don't know what's in, what Danielle meant by that because you went on the conversation. Joel's explanation, since he was listening in, he knew he couldn't apologize. So his best explanation for RTS, and this, now, this is your city manager who came up with this RTS. His best explanation was if him and his wife go on vacation for thirty days, when you come back for thirty days, you still have to pay the RTS fees. My reply to you, yes, you should, because it was turned on in your name by you or your wife. Okay? Your ordinance says, all this is my responsibility. When I came in here, tried to put it on the counter, I got personal, and I went straight at him, so nobody heard me. I thank you right now for listening to me. Really, I do. Once it got personal, I lost it because I've seen this before. Keep going, Ron, get back to, okay, after talking to Joel about that, your RTS, far as I'm concerned, your pumps at the gas station, they're ready to serve you, but you can't get a drop of gas out of them until you pay first or request to use them. Then by Danielle, using her office, her position in her office, once she made that threat about, I'm lucky that it get backdated, now she's using the office, this council, and everything else to back her threat up. And if you guys uphold her wrongdoing, you're doing exactly what she wants you to do. Accountability for this would have been for Danielle to apologize to me. If that's why you heard me call her turd and everything else, so I could apologize personally, she should apologize to me if she didn't mean it as a threat. Once she brought your office into it, asked a threat, asked, asked a hammer to hit the nail, the threat is you guys now. Everybody should have just, should have been a learning experience. Danielle, if she's going to go that far, she should have sent me a letter of, Mr. Jones, you're responsible for blah, c, plea. Other words, I'm responsible for, she could have explained that out just instead of sending me a bill after eight months of owning a neglected property, that if you go by there now, the trees have been cut down, there's a new roof on the top of it, the, it's been staked out and everything else. But you want me to pay forty dollars a month for something I'm not getting. Tell you what, why don't we, on every second Monday, why don't everybody up here burn up forty dollars right here? Because that's what you want me to do. Danielle should apologize. Right now, I shouldn't be charged nothing. It was her fault. She overstepped her boundaries. Joel, you gotta, she was wrong. She was wrong. You wouldn't want that to happen to you. I don't know what, wouldn't nobody want that to happen to them. I thank you for listening to me. We're not even going to go there because I guess you understand about me not standing for the flag, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I showed you my picture. Didn't nobody say, uh, thank you for your service? Liberty and justice is not for all. I've been here for fifty-three years. He said he knows my mom. I don't act nothing like her. She's probably rolling over in her grave right now for the way I act. But she had to fight to be, had to tell that First National Bank, and I've seen all that. Like I said, I apologize, but I should not be charged. It's in you guys' hands now. That's all I can say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on down to the next item on the agenda is reports from boards, commissions, and city offices. Eleven A, City Boards, Commissions, and Area Agencies. Eleven A one, report, or Airport Advisory Board, August meeting. Peter, please.
We met and reviewed, revised our ALP due to the closing of the grass runway. So that, of course, changes our ALP and the airport layout. Also, at the same time, we had to also look at our capital improvement plan and update that so that then we can be current with the state. So we did go through that. The board did motion to support the ACIP, and that's about it. We talked a little bit about jet fuel still and what's going on in the future, but.
Thank you, Peter. Next on the agenda, eleven A two is the Historic District Commission, August meeting. Mike, please.
We met, we had a full house. Everybody was in the seats. There were two properties. They both got approved. And then there was some discussion about where do we want to go? What do we want to do? And defining what is broken. And so we're going to be working on this for a while.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda is eleven A three, the Downtown Development Authority, August meeting. I'll take this. We had discussions about the downtown improvement project update. Parker gave us an update on that. At that time, we were wishing, or hoping that the sidewalks got poured, and that did happen part, or they started the sidewalks, I guess I should say. And it was just kind of general about what was going on, where they were at, so. And then we talked about the waste signage update. Parker mentioned that to the committee about the steering committee that we had and how good that went. And then the Heron Mark did get the match on Main Street. Parker provided that update. And I guess all the final documents were submitted for that, were successfully submitted. And then we talked about ATAC waiting on theirs to get that done. They're kind of on a high, a short deadline, but they're waiting on the contractor, I guess, so. What else? Oh, the DDA wants to explore options for public restrooms in the core downtown, and this is kind of where I talked to Joel about City Hall. But it's also maybe being discussed about, at one of the meetings, Joel talked to us about putting like portable, like a portable, and I don't want to say portable because it's really stationary, but enclosed, like a restroom, it may be in the shopping district or something, and that's yet to be determined. But it may be something that we want to discuss. If it doesn't work out, have City Hall open, and even if it does, maybe putting that somewhere, putting one of those somewhere that makes it look decent. My thought is maybe we have the enclosure look, be comparable to the recycle, the dumpster enclosures, you know, to make it look like it fits, so. But we didn't discuss all that at DDA. That was just kind of my thought afterwards, but now as we're talking, so it might be something we think about, but. And we did talk about the dumpsters downtown. Those are moving on, and you'll see later in the packet, so. I think that was all. Next on the agenda is the Finance Department, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Roger, please.
Yes, so we have accounts payable in the amount of two million four hundred eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and three cents, and a payroll in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents, for a total disbursement of two million five hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. I make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven D, Water Utilities. Eleven D one, request to approve a purchase order for System Specialties to provide three diverting and isolation valves for the Water Resource Recovery Facility in the amount of twelve thousand five sixty-six. Doug?
Uh, yep, this is for a replacement diverting valve for basin three, and then two isolation valves, because when they were installed, they never put isolation valves on so we could work on them. So we want to put the isolation valves in so we can work on these valves better. The current valves, the current valve has been repaired before. Current cost to repair it is more than the different brand new valve we want to replace it with. And we have the replacement brand elsewhere in the treatment plant, and they have provided very good service for us.
Thank you, Doug.
Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven D two, request to approve, excuse me, approve a purchase order for Kennedy Industries to approve replacement parts for the JWC Septage Honey Monster in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Yep, this is for Septage Station Two that was installed in two thousand twelve. Annually, we take and replace the brush on the auger that removes the materials out of the septage as it's delivered and screened. The screen is what allows the debris to be caught on it and the water to go through it. Periodically, it gets holes in it, and we have to weld new patches back on it. It is getting to a point now that it is just getting so thin, we really can't weld on it anymore, so it needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order for Kennedy Industries.
I support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is eleven D three, Acceptance of a Report Regarding Payment for Emergency Work Performed by Waste Recovery Systems on the Eastern Avenue Live Station Force Main.
Yep, this happened, started on the evening of June eighteenth and went pretty much through all of June nineteenth. The Force Main sprung a leak, picture on the left-hand side. There was a reducer in there, got a large hole in there. And we had, initially, city crew was on site. We excavated hydrovac down to it to assess it. By the time we got down to it and saw it, it was, you know, beyond what city crew is capable of repairing. So we called in Northwest Kent for mechanical and waste recovery. They provided additional hydrovac services and bypass pumping to tankers to bring all the waste that would normally go down through the Force Main right down to the wastewater plant. So, you know, at this point, we needed to get this fixed in June. You know, raw sewage started going on the ground. We got that cleaned up, and we just needed to get this done. So, you know, I let Joel know, but authorized, you know, whoever we needed to be, come in and do the work. Just received the bill a couple of weeks ago, and Tracy wanted to make sure we got billed to the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. So then it's on agenda tonight to let council know of the expense and what it cost.
Yeah, go ahead.
Doug, just to confirm or clarify, your report explains that this will be billed back to Perrigo, correct?
Yes.
So we have to put forth the payment first, and then we bill Perrigo separately?
Yes, yep. I actually, when I received the bill, this, the waste recovery was the last invoice I was waiting for on the, this repair. Once I had that, I made out a invoice for Perrigo, for City Hall to send to Perrigo that included that, Northwest Kent's bill for the actual mechanical repair, the piping, and what city time, materials, and equipment was on site, and that was already, has been submitted to Perrigo.
Okay, so although it does require a budget adjustment, those funds will come right back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and so I'm seeing one invoice here. You just said that was the last invoice you's.
Yes, the one.
You've got, so the repair was more than this?
This was just for the.
Eleven thousand nine eighty-one.
This was, this was just for the bypass pumping and the hydrovac service for one company. On Northwest Kent, they are an approved vendor. Their invoice was fifty-five hundred to six thousand, I believe. I can, I can provide a copy to council of that, too, if you would like.
I guess I'm asking why we just got this one to approve and not the whole job amount?
Because the, the one, they're not an approved vendor, and it was over the five thousand dollar amount that Joel can approve as an expense. We already, it was already submitted as an expense to be paid, but as a emergency-type situation, we have to notify council of the expense.
Okay. I just guess I'm questioning why we're only seeing a portion of it when it, this wasn't the whole job that was an emergency.
I, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So do you want to see like what the invoice that was sent to Perrigo?
I guess I would just like to know what this total job cost.
All right, I can provide that for council.
That would be nice to see instead of just a portion from one.
Yep.
Company, but if nobody else cares, I, it don't matter. I'm just questioning why we're only seeing part of it, but.
I'd like to see the full invoice, because you said you do also bill for the city's time.
Yes, yep. Yeah, I can, you know, I'll send a copy to council and Joel of what the request for invoice to be sent to Perrigo was.
Thank you, Doug. We need a motion on this, right?
I move to accept the report regarding payment for the emergency work.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is eleven F, City Manager and City Clerk. Eleven F one, request to approve updated AT&amp;T cellular lease agreement terms. Joel?
Yeah, we have been approached by both of our lessees on our water towers. AT&amp;T has cellular antennas on the water tower hill, water tower. They would like to renegotiate their terms, their current terms expire, I believe, at twenty thirty. They would like a reduce, they wanted to start with an extreme reduced cost, like a seventy-five percent reduction and a two percent annual increase. Their reasoning is five G is going to be coming to Alleghan, and autonomous vehicles are going to be driving all over downtown Alleghan, and you have five G antennas on every corner. And if we don't negotiate with them, they'll just take the towers down right now. And I said, okay, that sounds good. Reached out to some other cities. They said, yeah, we're doing the same thing. We just don't return the phone call. Thankfully, Doug reached out to Dixon Engineering, who is our engineering firm for our water towers. They do all the painting and the design and the specs for us. They said, yeah, we hear these phone calls every few years. We're surprised you haven't got one yet, but now you're getting them. And they are, they're usually just bluffs. So we talked to them some more, and they said, okay, how about if we keep the monthly rate the same, but instead of a three percent increase, you only have a two percent increase, and then we extend the term? And we are recommending that you stay at three percent, you stay at the same monthly rate with a three percent escalator, and we, we extend the term. We're fine with extending the term as long as they fix the damage that the previous person did on this property. that the previous person did on this property. Any questions? I don't have the authority to approve lease agreements, they have to come to council, and I do not want to get into a back-and-forth discussion with a leasing agent out of Dallas, Texas, on what the terms should be for cellular towers. So, as a council, I need direction from you. Staff is recommending that the annual escalator stays at three percent, and that AT&amp;T fix the damage that their contractor did during their last inspection.
I agree with that, me too.
Then, I would just say, the only caveat was they threatened, they would just look for another place for a cellular tower, and we are in a valley, we are the only ones with a water tower nearby. I guess they could go try to grab farmland, but we have a small cellular ordinance already, and most of the townships have cellular ordinances as well for towers. So, according to our resources and who we spoke to, we are in a good position to just respond. We're keeping our escalator at three percent, but we will extend the term. Any questions from council?
No.
I engaged Doug and Tracy Stahl in this discussion as well.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I would need a motion from you that. You accept, it'd be easy enough if you just say you accept staff's recommendation as written.
I move we accept staff's recommendation. Support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the request to approve the construction of six dumpster enclosures in downtown Alligan. Joel?
Sure, over the past several years, we've talked about the need to clean up the process on how we handle trash in the downtown area. We've had a handful of community meetings, either just specific on this issue, or through the DDA, or the downtown lowdown. We went out for bed back in twenty twenty-two, nobody responded to our bid to construct these six dumpsters. We then contacted a fencing company out of Grand Rapids that specializes in dumpster enclosures. They came down, walked around the downtown with Parker and myself, and then submitted a bid for fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. At that time, we weren't quite done with the financing plan for the downtown streetscape. So, I just wasn't comfortable moving forward with that discussion at that time. I shared my frustration at a few meetings about this process, and it was brought to my attention that we should talk to the company, I refer to as an individual in here, but the company that constructed the enclosure behind the Griswold for the city. And that was a good idea. So, we reached out to that individual, that individual, Robert Galloway, spent some time with staff, Doug Codson, myself, Parker, and Jeff Maury, talking about how we could get this done, most, the cost-effective way for the city. And so, it really is a joint design-build project is what we are looking at, where this company will secure the material, utilize their staff, and utilize our city staff and our city equipment for site prep. And there's a handful of areas where using our Bobcat, we're going to have to clean up some dumpsters, remove some panels like behind the new health center at Locust Street. So, that's across the Minnies and Mugshots. And then down on the riverfront, behind two forty-five Hubbard, near Tantric, that's going to be a much smaller, a one-stall enclosure that we can do there. These, those, the two on the riverfront will include gates. On the screen and in your packet is an example of the siding they're going to be using. This is siding that is already in our downtown, you see that, you see this at a Tantric, both their locations on Hubbard and Water Street, and you see this also on Tilt's Two Building on Brady Street. So, it's an established siding that's been approved by our historic district already. Any questions?
Do we have a downtown trash program?
We have a downtown trash program that has been designed, it has not been implemented. It has not been approved. We have a program that's been reviewed by our city attorney, and ordinance has been developed, been presented to the DDA. The DDA has requested that we start this process in January. So, we plan over the fall months of October to unveil it once again to the property owners in the downtown. So, that, that's where we are with the program.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because if we're building dumpster enclosures and don't have a program or ordinance established yet, doesn't that seem like we're jumping, putting the horse in front of the cart? That unless if this is going to have a caveat that we're not going to start this until that is approved.
So, I, I can appreciate the, you know, getting the horse, getting the cart in front of the horse analogy on this. Mike, Parker and I, Parker and I had this discussion. What we keep coming back to is in twenty seventeen and eighteen, when we first started looking at the vision for downtown. You know, the vacant buildings that aren't vacant anymore was an issue. The busted-up sidewalks and streets was an issue. The number-one issue was dumpsters on public sidewalks. Unsightly dumpsters, you know, behind, you know, in our Cutler Street parking lot. The dumpster, you know, across the street from Minnies and Mugshots, and how it just deteriorated that is. The dumpster issue we're having with the city, with the one here in the city parking lot. We're investing a little more than nine million dollars in a brand-new streetscape. If at the end of the day, we end up with unsightly dumpsters still, I think that is going to be a struggle for us.
That's not so much my question, it's, we don't have an ordinance for it, and we're building additional. That's where I'm at. We should probably have that ordinance and that established, and saying that it's going to be implemented at this time, and we're going to build the dumpsters for it, because we're building dumpsters for a non-existent program. Except for the ones that are replacing existing.
And again, I, I, other council members, council members can chime in, and I see, I see that argument, and I appreciate that argument. I would offer a second argument, that what you're doing is creating a series of dumpster enclosures that's going to beautify and clean up downtown Alligan, and if we get the program installed, that's great. But if something happens where, you know, there's a community referendum on the program, and it fails, at least we still have dumpster enclosures to deal with some of the unsightliness.
So, then there'll be private dumpsters in there, or what?
There already are private dumpsters, behind the Regent Theater, a handful of private businesses, the city-owned dumpster behind the, you know, across the street from Mugshots. No city uses going there, that's city land, and that is city, that's a city structure. Minnies has a dumpster on the city sidewalk without any license or permission or approval, on the grid, same thing. So, I, I, I see what you're saying, and I can appreciate that argument. I would offer a separate, a sec, a second argument for council to consider that this is a beautification program at the same time of creating a landing pad for that ordinance.
I, I just would like to see the ordinance and approve it first, and then it's no problem with me on this. It's just, I don't see that we don't have a program. It's, this all been in the movement of establishing this program. I think the program should be established. If we already have our site locations, we know where they are, and then it's a matter of approving for the locations to actually be built out.
If, if we went ahead and didn't get approved, would you not still want to have enclosures to cover up the dumpsters?
Not necessarily. If it's not approved, nobody's going to be using it if nobody puts a dumpster in there, because they're all still using Herbie Kirbys, because that's still allowed, then it really didn't accomplish anything. Because if nobody puts a dumpster in it, because they're just like, who's going to privately put it in it and pay for it? And that's the whole thing of why I said we need a program, and if the program's there, then of course, then we have to have enclosures. But otherwise, I'm like, I don't, I just see having that first is the first step of this. And we've been talking about it, talking about it, and talking about it, but we haven't approved anything. And so, if, if it was a matter of the first ones to be done are the ones that are existing dumpster enclosures, that, the one by the Regent, the ones that are already existing, don't have a whole lot there, other than, you know, it's, they've got a private dumpster in it. But if the city doesn't like to see the private dumpster, it's one of those. I'd like to just see that program finalized before approving building new enclosures for sites that aren't existing.
I think they're two separate programs. The dumpsters need to be enclosed, and they are in terrible shape. That one behind the Regent Theater, which I use, is a constant pain. The one my wife used behind the Dewey's property is right across from you, Peter, that's terrible. This program is to replace those, and to be ready for when we do have the other. So, I don't see what there is a problem whatsoever.
So, just for clarification, so we're looking at six, how many of them will be new enclosures?
So, new enclosures would be one, two, three, four are new enclosures.
So, only two are, are going to be where an existing dumpster is?
Okay, so, correct, yeah.
Okay, so the one behind the Regent and the one behind the Dewey's.
The one behind the Regent and the one behind the Dewey's are...
Those are the existing ones.
Those are existing ones. And we're looking at, we're looking at constructing five of these this year. And then the one behind the Regent, we're looking at constructing next year, because we're looking to redo that parking lot next summer, hopefully, if everything falls in place.
It's a mess, too.
It is a mess.
Is there, was there a reason, is it just because now is the time to build? Is there a reason that we're doing this before we're approving?
Yeah. I would offer, what you just said is the reason, now is the time to build.
But is, so is there a reason we haven't approved the trash hauling yet, or, or put that, moved that forward?
Oh, I would say there's not a reason we haven't moved that forward yet. You know, we have the ordinance, you know, it's all typed up with our city attorney. That is something we can bring forward at any time now. We were trying to bring our ordinances up in groups, and that's a part of a group we're looking to bring up.
Isn't part of the cost of these enclosures in that program?
So, part of the maintenance, it very much could be, yeah, so...
When we went through like the numbers and how we were going to come up with charging, that's, that's why I look at, I have the ordinance established, and then I go, okay, we're within the budget, we're making this make sense, that this isn't going to become burdensome to the city, and it's actually going to be a benefit to everybody, because it'll take some of the city costs out of maintaining these enclosures, because now we have a trash program that is collecting a fee, that part of that can go towards keeping these enclosures, as well as building them in the first place. And that was the whole, like, that's why I like to do that first, rather than this, is because that program talked about knowing that we had the money there and to do this, when we're always, you know, being tight on budget because of the streetscape and everything else. It's like, okay, well, this offsets that cost, is why I wanted that first.
So, so in those numbers, when we've, and this, this has been shared, you know, through the DDA, through the downtown lowdown, through the meetings, the downtown dumpster program would generate roughly forty thousand dollars a year, dependent on uses, because it's dependent on the use of the building, and uses change each year from building to building. Depending on the use of the building, it's going to generate forty thousand dollars a year. The most recent contract we got from Republic, or estimate from Republic, was around thirty-five thousand a year. So, we're looking at about five thousand dollars that would go into a capital program for maintenance, gates break. Someone might drive into one of these dumpsters, and we have to replace a panel. It's one of the reasons why we're going with this kind of material, because it's easy to replace. Yeah, we can take a panel off and put a panel on.
I mean, I think Peter brings up a good point. I don't know that I hold this up for that, but I think you make some really good points, Peter.
Joel, you said that program, DDA, was hoping to implement in January?
Yeah, that, that's when they want to implement it. That might be another reason why we haven't escalated it so much over the summer months, is because the DDA didn't want to see it start till January.
And their thinking on that was, because with the streets being tore up and business has been slower, that they didn't want to hit the businesses with a, oh, now we're going to start charging you more for...
Some cases, some cases less.
Refuge.
Yeah. Well, on that, I would just think what we do is we approve it, and it would be implemented in January, and it's just, hey, we're not going to get nothing this year, because we're going to implement that program in January. That's when this ordinance takes effect, that's when all this program starts rolling out.
And that's what DDA said.
That's why I just want us to approve it and just get it over with, rather than wait till January to approve it. We already just approve it now, implement it, and set the type, time to be January, then everybody knows it's coming. It's definitely coming, and it's, no questions about it anymore. Because right now, it's still, there's questions, because it needs approval by us. And it's not a guaranteed approval, when we see the final ordinance and all of that, because I just want to get it done.
So, what direction do you want to give us, what do you want to do?
Just so we're clear, it is a recommendation from staff that we approve the construction of six dumpster enclosures in downtown Alligan. That's what staff is recommending.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't want to hold this up, because I know there's, in Michigan, there's only a certain amount of time we can build, but... So, I mean, I would, I want to see this go forward, but I wish we would have done this.
Look at that, it's shovel-ready, it's all shovel-ready for the ordinance. When the ordinance passes, it's all there, we don't have to do anything else.
Yeah, but, yeah.
It's there, it's ready to go.
But we're not rubber stamping, and we got to pass an ordinance, but...
That's, yeah, that's the other half. Either way, they're needed.
Yeah, they are, and I agree, and I want to see it move forward.
Do we know when construction would start, like what would be the estimated?
Yeah, so construction will start immediately on this project. Materials will be ordered, staff is ready to go, working with Robert Galloway to get the project done.
And that could be same situation if we approved the ordinance to start in January? You know, if, you know, if we tabled this, let's say, for a couple of meetings, to get that ordinance approved, we'd still be able to start on time?
I, I...
Like immediately?
Yeah, that I don't know. I mean, we'd have to reach out to the contractor to see if we can do this construction in October.
I'm not a fan of awarding a contract to a council member's immediate gain.
Yeah, so, in our council rules, rules and policies, which Mike, I'm sure you've read, there is a conflict of interest section, so the mayor will recuse themselves. And then I would just point out that we have received zero RFPs, and then the only other company that submitted one was sixty-eight thousand. Or fifty-eight thousand, I apologize.
Doesn't our ordinance allow us to give priority to local contractors?
I don't know off the top of my head, I hope it does. I'm a big, I'm a big supporter of local contractors.
I think if their bid is over, like, ten percent or something, over the lowest bid, then we could allow them.
I apologize, I just don't know that off the top of my head.
Something like that. I make a motion to approve the construction of six dumpster enclosures in downtown Alligan.
I support it.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And I abstain. Next on the agenda is Communications from City Manager, Council, and Mayor. Doug, do you have anything else? Oh, no. You knew I was going to pick on you.
Yep. I just wanted to update council on the water loss report. Our numbers from previous month have improved. We are down under twenty percent now. We found one main leak off, you know, I'll say in the Mill District area. We actually found one, another one this past weekend, right on Marshall Street, not near significant, but it appears, it was a two-inch galvanized service that has probably been leaking for a long time. Again, not near significant, not near as many gallons, but it was definitely a leak that's been going on for a while. So, you know, positive note, we are going in the right direction. Few more days, we should get the water loss for July, that was read August one, and we'll see once where that goes, so...
Good question, Doug. How long do you think it will take to actually stabilize, so we can see if those two are the...
Well, this last one, I mean, like I said, it was a small one. I don't know if that would have even a one percent effect on the water loss. We're hoping, because the, the large leak we found was mid-June. We're hoping because the, the large leak we found was mid-June that the, I'm gonna say close to ten percent decrease in water loss um, for June's reading, um, that we'll see more than that come, once we get the, the August reading in. So. We should know, like I said, probably within the next week or so, um, how we're doing.
Good, mm-hmm, thank you Doug. Michaela, do you have anything? Parker?
Yes, I do, um, by the time we meet next on August twenty-eighth, Roland on the River will have wrapped up for the season, there are just two more Fridays left. And then, uh, that August twenty-eighth meeting will be the night of the final fork in the road, so. Uh, as far as downtown Alligan events are concerned, summer is done by the time you all meet next, so. Um, and then I also wanted to point out too, um, that, uh, the Griswold is going to be very busy this next, uh, week or so, yeah, um, there was a comment that was made at one point in time about, from, from a, a renter about, well, can we just get in there and set up a few days beforehand, and then I had to stop and be like, no, we've got, art camp is going on all week this week with the Alligan Area Arts Council and the lower level of the Griswold. Uh, Thursday is the regularly scheduled Mothers Against Dunk Drive-In meeting. Uh, Friday is the setup for the, uh, Lake Alligan Benefit Concert that is taking place on Saturday. Uh, oh, man, how many tickets did Ryan say we had left?
Five, no, like ten.
There's like ten tickets left for the six-hundred-seat Griswold Auditorium, uh, for the concert on Saturday, so that is very exciting. Uh, and then on Sunday, there is a private rental in the evening. And then Monday morning, the, uh, AISA group is hosting all of the AISA-wide, uh, instructors at like seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning on Monday. Uh, and then we've got another wedding reception next Saturday, so that place is gonna be popping for these next couple of weeks. So, uh, I just wanted to point that out to dispel any thought that the Griswold is just sitting there collecting dust. It is not, it is very much in use, so we love to see it.
Good, great, thank you Parker, Joel, do you have anything else?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Bill?
I have nothing.
Thank you, David?
When will we get an update on the powerhouse for the dam?
Sure, yeah, and, uh, I think Doug Codson, uh, forwards me a monthly report of the activities and, and that report I forwarded on the council, and I believe in every report, he mentions he inspects the dam and, you know, there's a sagging of the roof that he continues to see, but that's all.
Any plans for removing the structure?
No plans right now.
I think that we should make that a priority at some point, some sort of plan in place for that structure. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Delora?
I just wanna remind council and anyone listening that there is a coloring contest going on through, uh, the city water department right now. So I believe they'll be posting the coloring sheet online. I know who won last month and he was extremely excited, so. Anybody with kids or access to, to children, get him involved.
Thank you, Mike, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Peter?
Uh, just real quickly, on Wednesday, uh, some of the city staff and I did a to, a second tour of Hundred Leafs, uh, grow facility. We, a bunch of us went, uh, in the spring when they had almost nothing growing and now it is very lush. Uh, and it's really cool to see and there, uh, the owner was there and kinda was part of the tour gave us a, a, a great tour and got to see a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff, so it was great. And so, uh, they have a lot of plans to do more and to expand, so really glad to have them in Alligan.
Good, so they had more than just Little Red Solo cups starting?
Yeah, yes, they did.
That lady who did the tour, was it the same one? She was, she was very, oh.
She was not there, she's actually the investor, we, we found out.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, it was.
Very, very nice, okay, good. Uh, the only thing I'd like to remind, uh, council is that we're gonna do, um, Joel's eval on August thirtieth, um, here at five-thirty. So, if you're working on his eval, just bring that with you. Michaela is collecting department heads' evals and she'll be sending out, if you just wanna send it to everyone rather than just me, that's fine, and then they'll have it. So you'll have, excuse me, you'll be getting that as soon as she gets all those results. Joel has already sent us his, so that'll all come together, we'll have our meeting and, um, can evaluate Joel. I think that's all I have, so. It is eight oh two, we will adjourn the meeting, thank you everyone for coming.